Good evening and welcome to the October 17th meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. First item is a call to order. Let's go here. Next, review and approval of minutes, September 19th. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Make a motion to accept the minutes as written. Seconds, okay. Go call, please.
Yes, your eye.
Chris going in.
Aye.
Okay, next item is staff updates from the town planner.
Some updates to note, the housing master plan chapter, the surveys are coming to a close. And the next steps for it, according to their scope of services, is a planning board workshop. Now, I know the board had delegated to the housing steering committee for actions on the updated master plan chapter for housing. But talking with SRPC last week, they wanted me to ask the board if they wanted to be a part of the workshop with the planning board and the steering committee members, conceptualize future housing in Barrington. Just to give an existing data and trends, recent housing land use applications and the community's future land use vision. The workshop will aim to answer a series of questions as to what should the house, sorry, what should the town's housing plan include? How much housing do we need? What types of housing do we want? Where the appropriate locations for different types of housing? So I told them I would bring it before the board to see if there was a consensus if the planning board wanted to be a part of that workshop or still delegate that to the steering committee. I know that two of you are already on the housing committee as well, but.
Are you doing that being like our second meeting?
Yeah, so that would be in our work session, meeting in November.
Do the other members of the board want to leave this to the steering committee since they've been involved in it? Or do you want to be involved in it?
It's gonna be the steering committee is plus.
Plus, yeah.
Additional board members. Whoever can make it.
There would still need to be some kind of feedback.
Yeah, so the next step before this meeting is to meet with the housing steering committee to do an exercise before that for the workshop to begin. The date is still being ironed out on that, but the next few weeks or so before it comes before the planning board to do that workshop. But it would be for the work session. I'm fine with either way, I mean, whatever you guys want to do, but I told them I'd bring it back. I know there was some discussion on. That you wanted to see.
Do you feel the steering committee has more background than, since I've been doing this for a while?
I do.
I don't have any capacity to.
Okay, so I think the consensus is we'll stick with the steering committee.
Okay. Just another thing to know. In November, our work session meeting is the week of Thanksgiving. And I'm not sure if people are going to be in town or around that time. So I was proposing to move the meeting up to the November 14th date. If there's conflicts with that, or if we don't feel like we'll have a quorum with either one of those dates. I just wanted to check now because we need to work on our zoning amendments. And the Conservation Commission wanted to do it at a work session for their zoning proposal amendment to the 9.6. But if not, then they'll just come to this meeting on the 7th, but that would just make your meeting longer. But whatever you guys want to do. Just trying to get a quorum so we can get our proposed zoning amendments. Out there.
I can do whatever.
So move it to the 14th from the 20th.
I mean, I'll be here too, but I don't know.
I can't do the 21st.
Okay.
Okay. Need a motion or just?
I just wanted to get a consensus if changing it to, if you change it to the 14th, we'll have to have a vote. But if you want to.
Yeah, 14th, right?
I mean, find us all going to.
Yeah, make a motion to change the November 21st meeting to November 14th. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Go call.
John.
Test your eye.
Thank you.
And, oh, one last thing. As you brought to this last time, just our updated rules of procedure for the planning board. They were, we had amended them on the 15th and the fee schedule was approved at the, at the select board meeting after that. And I just want to make sure everybody received a copy of that for your files.
Thank you.
That is all I have. Thank you.
Okay, item number 5A. This is a request to extend the application for one additional year. Mr. Berry, would you like to comment?
Do you mind just checking if your mic's?
Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing Dove Development Group here this evening. This is a project that the board approved for us on Route 9 at the Christmas Dove. And since the time of approval, I think we've all witnessed what's happened in sort of the construction world in terms of construction costs. That project had two phases that were associated with it. And what we're actively working on currently is bringing the second phase into the first phase. So it would be all designed and permitted as one project. We'd bring it back to the planning board for a planning board revision for approval. And by doing that, it makes the upfront construction costs to get into the property manageable. And therefore, the project is then financeable. There were additional offset improvements that are going to be required by NHDOT that are again upfront costs. And to offset those costs, we have to bring what we were contemplating as a second phase into the project earlier so that a bank will look at it holistically as one project. So as we all know, engineering, peer review, planning board process takes time. And so we're asking for the board to extend the permit for us.
Questions? Motion to grant the one-year extension?
Just got a question, general comment, I'm assuming. But you're looking at pulling this in. One of the components of that because.
Yes, yep.
So I'm assuming that may be the start.
Yeah.
In conjunction.
Probably have to worry about it for.
Now, but originally that was phase one.
So it was permitted as phase one, phase two, and then what I'm referring to as phase two is that is actually the third phase where there's more mixed use development that would take place at the rear of the site. And that was sort of conceptual in nature at the time. We'd now have to design that and bring that all into one phase.
And one question on the ZBA approval you got, does that expire at some point?
Yes, so we would just ask that your approval be contingent on us receiving an extension from the ZBA as well.
Okay.
Is it necessary? The ZBA, when that, when we. We've always pushed everybody that. Has to come before us because I would be, you know, granting something.
There's sort of a, either a misunderstanding or I don't want to call it a miscommunication, but I personally don't think I need a continuance on my ZBA approval, which is why I haven't asked for it yet. After talking with Vanessa, I agreed to request the extension on the ZBA approval. And I just noted that this board could condition their extension on getting the ZBA approval. I understand your standard practice is ZBA first and then this.
I would agree because once the ZBA grants relief, it runs in perpetuity with that parcel.
It, well, it's, so it runs for two years, but the part that I don't agree with Town Council on is that as long as I have an active planning board approval, that ZBA approval, in my opinion, runs, which is why I don't think I need an extension. But I'm happy to go to the ZBA and ask for that extension. So it's unlike me standing here asking for a site plan that's not permitted by zoning, I should go to ZBA first.
You want to modify the motion?
Well, if you.
If you want me to clarify, so I reached out to the town attorney on the project and the ZBA. And she had given her legal opinion that they would need the ZBA because it's going to their expiration. Because I said they're coming for their board for their second year. And the ZBA is almost at their two-year mark. Going with what Town Council is buying this, so. And that's kind of background, but their extension for the planning board runs out before their ZBA. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so the motion is to, how would you like to word it? Continuate on ZBA approval or in concert with the ZBA approval?
Essentially, if the ZBA declines our extension, the planning board approval is null and void anyway. So it really.
Okay, that's your motion, second, anybody?
I'll second.
He's efficient tonight.
Favor. Yep.
Test your eye.
Chris going in. Okay, thank you, Chris. Next item on the agenda is 240-8-NR-23-subparentheses 23, Young Road LLC. This is the Young Road project, it's been with us for a while. Mr. Berry.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering. I hope not to take up too much of your time this evening on this project. You'll note that we, the application has been modified to include the new owner of the property has sold. So the application was updated for that effort. We did finalize a traffic analysis that the board had asked us for, and we've now submitted that to the board. That has gone to CMA for a review. And the board asked us for a wildlife or environmental impact assessment, which was also conducted and submitted to the board. So tonight, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that the board might have on the traffic impact analysis on the environmental assessment that was conducted. We do have the one waiver before the board, or the waiver requests before the board that we would like action on, most notably the way site distance is calculated. I testified to this many, many times before the board that your subdivision regulations are inconsistent with ASHTO standards and are also inconsistent with your site review standards. And so what we're asking for is that the definition of site distance be utilized as we've presented it on the plan. We originally presented a plan that used the NHDOT standard at 3.75 feet or 3 feet 9 inches, looking at 3 feet 9 inches, which is the standard for DOT. 14 and a half feet off the fog line or edge of pavement. At one of the prior meetings, Mr. Allard commented and the board agreed that he felt more comfortable reviewing the application at 3 and a half feet, looking at 3 and a half feet, which is consistent with the ASHTO manual. And so we updated our site distance plans to be consistent with that request. And so again, we're asking that the calculations for site distance be used at 3 and a half feet, looking at 3 and a half feet, calculated at 14 and a half feet off the edge of pavement where your regulations say 20. 14 and a half feet meets, again, the ASHTO regulations, also the NHDOT regulations, and are consistent with your site review regulations as well. I just want to point out, as part of our traffic analysis, we did a pretty extensive analysis of the existing roadway. We've counted the roadway twice. We counted it during the winter months and we projected a seasonal adjustment to those projections. We then counted it during peak season, which is shortly after 4th of July. So peak season on these types of seasonal roads are during the summer months, specifically July. And so there was no peak season adjustment factor. What's the matter?
Sorry.
Oh.
I was just, I don't remember actually seeing.
You haven't got it yet.
Yeah, I didn't see it either.
I mean, I read Chris's review, but it was.
So we re-received it, like with his later submission from the last, so from the last planning board meeting, he said when he submitted it to our office to go ahead and forward it to CMA, the board had approved of that. I will get you a copy as I apologize, I thought there were ones with the packet this evening.
I brought all my old.
Old stuff. So the, and to note, the drainage analysis is too large to email. That kept bouncing back. So if the board would like to review that in conjunction to before the comments from CMA reviewed, they can be found online under our map and lot. Bind, there's a binder for it. I also have a copy in our office, too, if you want to see a hard copy of the.
So I guess being that, that most of you don't know what I'm talking about, I will slow down and discuss it more succinctly. Nope, nope. So we did a traffic count during the winter months of 2023, during the months of February. We took those counts originally and we adjusted them for peak season. And DOT provides us with data on how to adjust counts that are done off-season to peak season so that applicants don't intentionally count during the wrong season. But also applicants can count during off-season and adjust to make sure that their study is applicable. Because of the delays that we've had in this application, we were approaching peak season and we determined internally that we would just recount Young Road during the peak season. And so we did that count and that count was done a week after July 4th. I didn't want to do it during the July 4th weekend. And I didn't want to stray too far from the month of July because that is the peak season for all of the roadways in the state of New Hampshire that sees seasonal traffic. And I think we all agree that Young Road sees a large percentage of seasonal traffic heading to and from Swains Lake. So that count was conducted. We then applied our trip generation to, from our project to the network and applied some results to that analysis. As part of that count that we undergo, there are speed measurements that are taken as part of that count. It's inherent to the count now. And so it breaks the count down from 95th percentile, 85th percentile, 50th percentile, and I think maybe a 35th percentile. And so the speed that most of us discuss during traffic analysis is what is the 85th percentile that people are traveling on the network? And what we found during that analysis was that people are traveling about 38 miles an hour. And we reviewed the speed data that we also captured during the earlier account. And it's consistent with that data as well. So when we think of people speeding on a roadway, yes, you're going to have people that are speeding above the 85th percentile. You're going to have people traveling below the 85th percentile. But the measured percentile on the roadway during that count was 38 miles an hour. The only reason that's really important is when we are applying site distance requirements in towns that don't have site distance requirements, we use that speed data to determine what our site distance should be. It's really not relevant as part of this application because the Barrington subdivision regulations require that this particular roadway have 300 feet of site distance afforded to it. And we've provided site distance profiles for each one of the driveways that shows that we have 300 feet of site distance, in many cases, more than 300 feet of site distance. And so we pointed out as a piece of relevant information for the corridor, but not relevant as it's related to the safety of the site distances provided. So Vanessa, do you know if they got the environmental study that we submitted? From Fragile Rock Environmental? I don't intend to go into great detail on that, but I would point out that it was submitted at the request of the board. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that the board has on that. So in general, we have nothing new to present to you as part of our plans. We did update the site distance profiles as we had discussed with the planning board. We did add some sediment erosion control notes to the project plan set. We did conduct a hydraulic drainage analysis of the site and found that peak rate of runoff in the entire watershed is not modified by this development. That's been submitted to CMA engineers for their review. Essentially, we have a watershed that's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of acres. And we are modifying a very small percentage of that. And it doesn't even kick what we call the curve. It doesn't even change the curve number of the entire watershed. And therefore, the storm water remains the same in the watershed. We do have a hydrologic, hydrogeous study that was conducted. It's been submitted to me. I was not able to submit it in a timely fashion with the rest of the reports, but we'll be sure to do that for the next planning board meeting. To my knowledge, CMA engineers still has an outstanding work order request that needs to be submitted to us and then review of the plans. With that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you have.
I had a bunch of questions, but I think I'll probably answer most of them. Especially when we talk about. Trip counts and peak. Generation. And location. Sure, the report's probably answered that.
So I can answer some of it, but I, obviously, we're at a disadvantage if you haven't read the analysis. So we're at a disadvantage if you, if you haven't received it and you haven't read it. And we'll accept that. So in terms of the actual study that was taking, has taken place, when we do traffic analysis, we study the corridor typically once for such a small area, small study. It's counted, typically, we do Thursday, Friday through Saturday, so we have those, those counts, a 24/7 count. We don't count pre and post in this case because pre and post would imply that we had a post model we could then use. So we apply our new traffic generated to the corridor to see if it has any impact, specifically at the Route 9 intersection. And then also further down into the corridor along Swains Lake, we did review some of that as well. Speed was really only measured once. I only provided the latest speed data that we took. There was no inclement weather that we needed to worry about. It was done during peak season, so you have a larger sampling to generate that 85th percentile. So we only provided the most recent data. We certainly can provide the older data, but I don't know how relevant it would be.
The only reason I ask is we talk about an on-peak allowable limit. And when you actually look at that, does it, does it line up? Because we're talking about the.
Just because we're talking about the peak being, that we have this extrapolated number that's used in off-peak. And the big concern is that we have this huge influx of volume in on-peak. Did we actually see that and did it trip beyond what is that 20% range that's projected from the allowable limit, I guess, on it?
Yep. So I'll let you read the report to derive the answer yourself. My conclusion is no. But again, I think you'd need to read it and be convinced of that yourself.
Okay. There is a request for waivers. Should be in your packet.
So we do have those?
Do we have those?
Yep.
Would you like to?
Yep. So the waiver is, it's in an odd place, it's in the definitions. So your definitions describe how site distance will be determined. So we're asking for a waiver to the definition of site distance to be consistent with the common practice intersection design 4A and the definition of site distance. And then I've expounded on that inside my waiver request document. And so essentially, figure 4A requires that for intersection site distance, the driver, driver's eye be calculated at 20 feet beyond the fog line. Well, that's at an intersection, which these driveways are not intersections. And so the typical procedure is to use, ASHTO prescribes 14 and a half feet off from the fog line. And more commonly, local roads are measured between 8 and 10 feet off the fog line. We used the ASHTO requirement of 14 and a half feet off the fog line. And then the site distance requirements discuss 3 and a half feet, looking at 0.5 feet, which is a passing site distance requirement, not a stopping site distance requirement for driveways. And so we're asking the board to waive that definition to allow for 3 and a half feet, looking at 3 and a half feet tall, which is the standard practice. So the waiver will properly carry out the purpose and intent of the regulations. I think we all want these driveways to be safe. And I think I've put in a great deal of effort into proving that each one of these driveways is safe to the common standard and is developed to the same standard that the driveways were in the neighborhood across the street and likely how your road agent determines what available and proper site distance is. So I think it's important to use that consistency. And if you don't use that consistency, consistency, then the strict conformity of the regulations would then pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, whereas you're placing the applicant at a disadvantage to all of the other lot owners in the town of Barrington. And then provide for various clips out of the current ASHTO manual to prove why we've calculated this the way we've calculated.
Questions?
What, I guess my piece I'm struggling with, when we talk about a driver at 3 and a half feet tall, looking at an object 2 feet tall, it could be the driver coming out of the driveway or the driver coming down the road. At 2 feet tall, it allows you to see a pet, a child. At 3 and a half feet tall, you're missing all of that.
So it's, it's actually, the point of site distance in a driveway setting is to allow for a driver sitting at the driveway intersection to determine whether or not they can pull out and safely navigate the roadway. So you're discussing passing site distance and stopping site distance along the alignment. What we're discussing is whether or not a driver has the amount of time required to make a left or right turn out of their driveway.
I still struggle with it at 3 and a half feet. On my way here tonight, as I was pulling off my road, there was a Porsche Boxer coming down the other way. I couldn't see the windscreen of it because of where he was in the hill. And if you look at the body line on it, it's, it's not more than 2 and a half feet off the ground. It's right in that line. If you take a small sports car, you're, you're not above 3 feet.
All I can apply is recommended practice.
No, I under, I understand. No, I understand where you're coming from. I also can understand where, when you look at this, there's, these are the variables that I'm assuming were put in place when these regulations were put in place for our town.
I, I think whoever wrote the regulations, honestly, and I'm not trying to be flip Andy, I think they misapplied sections of the ASHTO manual. This is, and if you look at your site review regulations, you can see the differences and see how they're applied differently for the same exact setting. It was a misapplication of the Green Book.
And 3 and 1/2 feet was measured from a standard automobile. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, and
Probably back in, what, 1960?
Well, and actually, ASHTO talks about that in the newest manuals, in that it's understanding that there are still vehicles that are
Yeah, sure. But 80% of the vehicles sold are just light trucks and SUVs where I measured, I'm up 4 and 1/2 feet almost.
Right. I don't disagree that if you look at the norm, it's probably shifted more to an upward line.
But we're doing the ASHTO things here, so. Any questions on these waivers and the additional questions? Is there a motion to grant the waiver? I will read the waiver. Do I have to read all of it? Just kidding. Nope, that's fine. Identification of waiver requests? Just that part?
Yeah.
The printed one, not the notes?
Right.
Okay. The requirement in referencing intersection design figure 4A with the definition of the site distance minimum from subdivision regulations. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Note that was added, 3 and 1/2 feet is consistent with the ASHTO 4 and 1/2, 4.5 foot off pavement. It's a calculation on plans, traffic analysis, winter, and that's additional stuff. Not related. Is there a second? Oh, didn't they make the motion? Oh, yes, I did make the motion. And I'm looking for a second. It's the definition of the site distance to be consistent with common practice in HDOT, NHDOT standards, ASHTO standards, intersection design 4A and definition site distance. Okay, roll call?
NAP I.
S.C.R.I.
Friskal I.
Thank you for that.
Next, we open it to public comment, so one more thing.
May I just make a note for the board? Just for like housekeeping, so in this case, we didn't print all the materials out. It was in the staff report and referenced in the staff report. In the future, I can, I'm more than happy to print out all the paper. I just didn't know if you guys wanted it all printed out.
Well, we had this
Right, so if you look at my staff report, I had listed all of the documents on here that were submitted to our office on September 19th and then the 21st, or
Right, these are electronic files.
And then the two, the two things that were sent to the CMA, which was I just didn't, I didn't know if anybody wanted to be bogged down because their documents are pretty heavy. I don't mind making 300-page copies for everybody. I, I'm not trying to be, you know, whatever, but Okay, how would you like me better to present that? I mean, we could probably talk about it in more of a work session if you'd like, but I just wanted to point, I did have it in here, but it wasn't quite front and center necessarily, and I wouldn't, wouldn't like to impede your process, you know? You saw that better. I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
Uh, you can make a motion to continue the case to, what's the date? Yep, we can do that.
I'm sorry.
That is in the next
Star is just trying to get in on the roll, I'm sorry.
Does anybody like to speak on this matter, contain, particularly about the traffic study and the waivers?
Are we going, I'm not addressing the traffic study or the waivers, but there was an environmental assessment that was done. Is there going to be a presentation on that?
It has been sent to CMA, right? Or do you have that too?
Environmental assessment was not sent to CMA. The board had asked just for the traffic study and for the drainage study to go to CMA. So, I guess if there's questions in relation to that, the applicant can address the board.
Yeah, I have a question and a comment. Sure, my name is Paul Panish, 101 Ross Road, representing Conservation Commission. And the issue that I had, and this is after a very cursory review, we've not had time to, to go through this in detail, the documentation here is voluminous, as you're, you're well aware, but we didn't see, at least on the maps, any indication of the existence of vernal pools, which would require increased setbacks. It's hard to imagine that, that, you know, critical habitats such as this with the proximity to prime wetlands and secondary wetlands as well, would not have vernal pools present on the properties. So, I was wondering if anything had been identified that I was unaware of. That's, that's an issue that the Conservation Commission would like to see addressed. The other comment that I have is really addressing the planning board. You know, I, I recognize that Chris did an outstanding job on this. He has complied with the letter of the law and the regulations, but as we pointed out earlier, it is the sense of the Conservation Commission that this plan is very contrary to the intent of the regulations, as stated in the document, in the planning board documentation. And I'd really like to point out, I know that you have a full schedule. I know how tough your job is, or I can imagine how tough your job is, but it really is incumbent on the, the planning board that the regulations represent the intent of the town, and especially in regards to these conservation subdivisions. They do not. It is very clear, and the sense of the commission, that this is really contrary to the intent, and we would really like to see the regulations modified to represent the intent of the town in a way that could be enforced by regulation.
Just a comment on that, we're beyond the point where we would change rules. The most effective way that you'll be able to do that moving forward, if you want that done
I'm not talking about this project.
No, 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 I'm saying the regulation, to change the regulation would be as a petition warrant article at this point.
Is that not something that the board, planning board would introduce?
The board cannot do that at this point. We've already been through multiple reviews. There are dividing lines here?
Yeah, I had trouble finding them.
Okay, I think I got it. So, we're not, we, we have, we've been very clearly pointed out that we're not to entertain any more rule changes in the cycle at this point.
Oh, no, I, I realize in this cycle, but yeah, look, looking forward, this is something that
But the petition warrant article piece will open officially, what is it, December, beginning of December? Petition warrant articles?
I believe they can, the first, the middle's in November for petition warrant article.
I, I'll discuss this with the commission and see if there's something that we think we might be able to put together in the timeframe appropriate.
I have some I'll be submitting as well.
Great, thanks, Andy. Thank you, everyone.
It's November 13th is the first day to accept petition warrant articles.
Thanks, Vanessa.
Would anybody else like to comment? Okay.
So, is, have you guys approved the waiver, or is that still, you guys are waiting on public comment for that, or?
We did vote on the waiver.
Okay, is that not
With an introduction, that way it's
Oh, sorry, Robert Cavali, 150 Young Road. Is no public comment allowed before you guys approve the waiver? And is there any going back on it at this point? Is there any point in talk, speaking to it? Is basically what I'm getting at?
Well, the way we do it is you vote on the waivers, and then it's public comment. Am I correct?
The board, the board discretion, but you
So, there is a point in talking about it. All right.
There's always a point.
Anyway, I have, I have a couple issues, I have a couple issues with the waivers. I, I have a feeling that they're asking for the waivers because they had a hard time meeting the requirement. Otherwise, they wouldn't be up here asking for the waivers, which only further increases the concern about safety there. And I agree with him, you know, with the elevation changes throughout that section, and the angles of those driveways that are going to be coming up out of there, you know, their headlights are going to be pointing at the sky when they come up out of their driveways, and there's so much elevation change through that area. I just, I don't, I feel like they're asking for the waiver because they're having a hard time meeting the, the regulation as it's written. So, like I said, that further increases my concern about safety, and I don't think that waiver should be approved. And the, the, the other thing is, it would be nice to know the location of where those speeds were taken, because there's a few points on that road where you have to slow down or you're going off. I feel like if that was put right at the bottom of my driveway, that they wouldn't have gotten an average of 38 miles an hour through there, because I get woken up at 4:00 in the morning from cars flying past my driveway, and I know they're doing, you know, just that one car alone would change that average. So, it would be nice to know the location of where that was taken. To, so, I just want to ask real quick, I was kind of confused on, maybe not the last meeting or the meeting before, but when the yield plan was approved, is, so that yield plan, from what I understand, is approved now, is that correct? Does that mean if they get shot down for the subdivision, the conservation subdivision, they're all set to go ahead and build their yield plan, or do they need further approvals for that?
Well, the yield plan is, follows the regulations in the town, you know, 80,000 square feet with the required upplans and everything, so.
Right, I'm just, so, it's been pitched to us as the yield plan is the more impactful plan for this property, and the less impactful plan of this conservation subdivision required all these studies to be done before approval. So, I'm just confused as to why the yield plan got approved without any of these studies being done, if it's a more impactful plan on the property. So, I, I don't know, I was just confused by that and was hoping that
The yield plan is a conceptual to show that you could actually meet that, but the yield plan has not actually been presented as a development proposal.
Okay, I, I just, I'm, I'm a little confused on how it works, so I'm just kind of trying to clarify it for myself. I guess, and there's nothing, nothing as far as planning, there's still more studies and stuff that got to come through for you guys to look at before anything gets approved further, right?
Right.
Okay. All right. I would like to give you just one thing to, I guess, sleep on and think about before the next meeting, kind of elaborating on what Paul had said. Last, or I don't know if it was the last one, but there was a few meetings ago where their attorney brought up a court case about, it was, hang on, excuse me, just one second, let me see if I can find this. It was, yeah, it was Dartmouth versus Town of Hanover, and, you know, using that as ammunition to help their case as far as, you know, they met the regulations and they got approved. I've read this case, other people that are supporting our side have read this case. The lawyer that I hired was familiar with this case, and they believe that it is not really relevant to what is going on here. I encourage you to go find that case, it's, again, it's Dartmouth versus, Dartmouth College versus Town of Hanover. I'd like you to go read that for yourself and just see what you guys think about it. One thing I would like to point out, it's, the Supreme Court even said that requirements should not be applied in a mechanical fashion, meaning just because they meet the requirements doesn't mean that they should have their plan approved. Basically, the Supreme Court said sometimes you need to operate in the gray, especially with a regulation like this, where 90% of it is based off intent. So, to me, it seems like this whole Article 10 that deals with conservation subdivisions, 90% of it is based on intent, so if you can't apply any of that intent, the regulation, especially in a case like this where the majority, the vast majority of what was set aside for conservation never would have been built on in the first place. This regulation, pretty much at that point, just serves as a loophole for them to use smaller lot sizes in a tighter area closer to the road. If no intent can be applied from this regulation, that's pretty much all the regulation serves at that point. So, I'd like you to please consider that, read that court case for yourself. It basically says sometimes you have to imply intent. So, I'd like you guys to take a look at that and consider it for the next meeting. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Hi, Len Cavali, Young Road, Barrington 160. First of all, I'd like to make a comment for Paul Panish. I don't believe Paul was asking you folks to change any rules. What he was asking you was to abide by the rules and intent that you guys have already written into it. Am I correct, Paul? All right, next thing. We haven't looked at some of this environmental impact here at all. We have some driveways here, if we're going to meet the, the rules of the road here, and these are supposed to be less than 10%, some of these driveways are going to require a considerable amount of fill. There are going to be, I don't know, maybe two or three houses here, where when the driveway meets the house, the foundation is going to be 7 feet approximately above grade. If you have a 10-foot wide driveway and it's 7 feet high, you have to have a 3 to 1 slope, 3 to 1 slopes, 21 feet out on either side of that driveway, plus the driveway itself. You've got 51 feet of fill. Now, you're telling me that that's not going to impact the drainage of that land, it's not going to impact the slopes? It's going to increase the slopes. There are driveways that are parallel, and you have fill going on both sides, coming in like this, and that's going to increase those slopes by a, well, probably from, change it from an 18% to maybe a 25% grade. How are you going to prevent that from washing out? How are you going to keep that, 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 or whatever, from getting into the watershed, getting into the pond? There's no way of preventing that with the amount of slopes that these houses and driveways are going to have. I'd just like you to think about that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Mark Brauch. I'm in Butter at 114 Young Road. So, I want to talk about the speed data in the speed report. I have a pretty large concern that the speed data could potentially be classified as bad data, this term used in my line of work. So, the applicant should disclose the exact location of where the data was collected on Young Road. I observed data collection, data collection technology on pole PSNH 330, 11.522-5, which could skew data towards lower speeds to help their narrative, and I, I'm not sure, but it might be an input to the waiver you just granted as well. I'm not sure about that, but correct me if I'm wrong. So, the perceived Um, so, the perceived data collection location is at a bend where people are slowed down already, or in the process of slowing down. Um, and doesn't accurate, that data sample doesn't accurately represent, um, the speed starting when the property, uh, when they go past the property line towards Route Nine, um, that Bob mentioned. Um, the analysis also emits reference to the yellow advisory, uh, twenty-five mile-per-hour sign in direct sight where the data is suspected to be collected, um, and I have, uh, visual reference on my phone if you would like to see it. Um, one of the other concerns is that in this blue packet, it might be over there still, I got it at the last meeting, uh, the road agent, um, which I believe is an independent, um, assessor of this, expressed concerns around the sightlines, um, both vertical and horizontal, I won't read it, but I think that should also be an input to your decision on the waiver, is someone independent to this also raised concerns? So I don't think we should loosen the regulations, um, to address that. Um, let's see here, uh, that's it in terms of speed, uh, for the environmental study. Um, it notes, uh, unfragmented woodlands and other landscape developments should be, um, protected and due diligence should be completed. So in the regulations of our town, the subdivision regulations, ten-point-one-one, I won't read it, but it specifically cites the intent to set these woodland, unfragmented woodlands aside from development, and a large majority of this proposed development is included in what our regulation says not to develop. Um, and then, I also had a note about vernal pools, so I'll skip that. Um, and I think there might be an opportunity to do a comprehensive endangered vegetation species review, uh, noted in three, section three-point-three, the environmental impact assessment, that this was not conducted. Um, I just have the stance that in a prime, with prime wetlands and the highest created habitat, we should conduct that due diligence. Um, and then, lastly, I just had a note, um, most of lot eight dash seventeen, um, is, it's a wetland itself, so if we are talking about conserving wetlands, um, I think this should be considered as part of the conservation as well. Um, and that is it, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
I'm at 155 Young Road, I'm in Butter, but I guess, I've seen in this town in the past, alteration of terrain, things haven't been done up when probably they should, because after the work had started, it went beyond the hundred thousand, uh, the, though, those areas that are supposed to be under that, what, uh, Lenny talked about was, when they start spreading out from the, the amount of fill that's gonna be in there on those driveways and everything, I think you'll find, and I'm just curious as to if it happens in there, and I, I see where it should have been AOT to begin with, when you start taking out what, what that does, um, I think that should be looked at. No, I still, I think it'd be easy for them, with the site work that goes in there, that you're gonna have areas where there's more than a hundred thousand stuff that's gotten up, so. It's something that, if, a year from now, when they're in there and, and dozing and everything, and I see there's a hundred and eighty thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand, I'll ask you people, what, what was the story on an AOT? Are you gonna need one? Maybe you don't need one, but it scares me.
Any more comments? Okay.
If anybody online is for, against this application, please raise your hand on Teams. Um, I don't see anybody that had called in, it looks like everybody's joined online. Just give a moment if you would like to speak. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that wishes to speak for, against this application.
Okay. I have a couple of small questions. Is it the intent to keep the forest a green belt similar to what's across Young Road in the Fish Eye Development?
Across the front of the property?
Yeah.
Yes, it's a requirement of our zoning variance.
Sorry, got a closed public comment. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, the one-hundred-foot, uh, green belt across the front of the site is a requirement of our zoning variance, and so the driveway access points are the only areas that can be disturbed for, uh, development within that hundred-foot setback. There was areas, certain, certain lots within the subdivision where we got relief, to have less than a hundred feet, but again, there's that-
Yeah, you got some forty-feet ones, right.
That's right.
Right. Uh, second, um, what is the estimated disturbance on cut and fill? Have you got any idea? You won't know that until you actually get in?
Well, no, and I think we all have to realize that, uh, though I respect Mr. Lindsay's comment, uh, AOT's not required on individual lots within a subdivision. Uh, if it's, uh, connected to a roadway construction, and an applicant opens up lots adjacent to new roadway construction and goes over one hundred thousand square feet, you do need an AOT permit. Each one of these lots are gonna be built on independently and separately, and unless each lot, uh, or one lot in the subdivision goes over a hundred thousand square feet on its own, uh, we do not require an AOT permit.
Yeah, it is. Um, I'm just kinda reminded about ninety-four Young Road across the street where they claimed it was gonna be a ten percent grade, turned out to be twelve percent, delayed construction of the house, had to go before the ZBA. And I realize a lot of these would be done during the building permit phase.
Yes.
So, um-
And, and to that, uh, we've got this idea that we're coming against the roadway at a super steep grade, and we have these super steep grades that go down into the sites. The sites themselves drop off from the roadway, we're not gonna claim they don't. Everybody in the room can read a topographic plan. Um, for us to develop the site distance profiles that we presented to you, we had to prove to you that we could have an, a, an approach grade of four percent or less, uh, and then go into a ten percent grade, which is the maximum in Barrington for a roadway, for driveway design into each one of these sites. Um, they're right in that, uh, they, the lots will require fill, and the front of the house will have to be filled, uh, and will likely have, uh, front-load garages that have full, uh, walls, uh, behind them, uh, that go, uh, full basement walls behind that. And so it's a way of working with the terrain and not against the terrain to develop out the sites. Not every site is gonna take a twenty-eight, thirty-two colonial with an attached twenty-four, twenty-four garage, some of these are gonna have to have some creativity to them to work with the terrain. Um, I think the difference between when the Fish Eye project was completed and now, I think there's a, a much higher sensitivity to the fact that there is a Barrington regulation that says ten percent maximum, and those are required to be proved to mark during the driveway permit process.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we're gonna be adding twenty-three mailboxes to the existing twelve on that road that's difficult.
Yes, and most likely the, uh, mail service will require that, um, each one of these gang up in a certain way. So we'll have, uh, at the joint driveway accesses, uh, we'll have, sort of a cluster area for mail. Um, certain mailboxes that are existing across the street will have to be ganged up together with ours, uh, and then, again, other joint driveways, uh, or driveways that aren't joint but are in close proximity, will have to be placed, uh, sort of on the common boundary line to reduce the number of mail stops.
No, they're all on that, they, we'll all be on the same side.
They're all on our side, right?
Yep. So, um, based on sheet forty-one, looks like, um, the driveways go into eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Uh, are up to seven hundred and fifty feet long. Um, but the plan you submitted on sheet, I think it's forty-two, show that those driveways are twenty feet wide?
Yeah, they're required to be twenty feet, uh, whenever you go over a hundred and fifty feet in length.
Right, so that goes with the subdivision regulations.
That's right, yeah, so it'll have to be eighteen feet and then some shoulder.
Right.
And that, that is a, a regulation in the subdivision regs, but also in NFPA Chapter Eighteen.
The two driveways that I was referring to, um, I guess one of them servicing lots eighteen and nineteen, you're pretty much four hundred and fifty feet in, but when you get out to Lot Twenty-One, you're close to seven hundred and fifty feet. Um, you didn't indicate there'd be a fire department turnaround anywhere at five hundred feet, because that would impact the trail, uh, where the trail is at its narrowest part.
Yeah, the, the turnaround on the longer, uh, driveways, uh, historically, the fire department has not required those, uh, which is why I haven't shown it. I would suspect that if the chief were interested in the turnouts, that, or the, the hammerhead turnout, that that would be worked out sort of during the construction. O- oftentimes, they're turned into the entrance to the driveway and to say, Lot Twenty would be made a little wider so that the chief could turn around.
Well, I was thinking you could do a radius, uh, flaring toward Twenty-One.
That's right.
And they could back out.
Yeah.
But that's true of a lot of them.
We had to do that up on Parker Mountain Road, he did, required us to, the, the fire chief specifically requested the turnaround.
Yep, and we did it on, uh, Freedom Offer Meeting House also.
And a lot of them, particularly the joint, um, driveways you have, um, let's say fourteen and fifteen and so forth, would easily allow for that, and even, uh, next one next to it, uh, twelve and thirteen, if the radius was made more comfortable, um, and if you use a fire department, fire truck, uh, template, just to show that.
Not, not a problem, it's common, we do that commonly.
Okay. Uh, the long one, the long driveways that we've been discussing with the, um, questionable slope, uh, they don't appear to be a problem because the driveway is like at a T at the bottom, so one driveway, you know, a fire truck from one could easily back into the other.
You're-
I guess the whole point is, we don't want any fire trucks or trucks carrying supplies to build a house, having to back up, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred, three hundred feet onto this particular road.
That's right. So, i- in terms of eight-three and eight-four, there's a T inherently designed into the subdivision. Eight-nine, eight-ten, again, there's a T that's inherently designed in the subdivision.
Right.
Then the, the longer driveways, uh, that go out to eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, that area is not steep, that area is quite flat, uh, compared to the rest
Like twenty-three is pretty flat there too.
Right.
But it's long, and you do provide a bump out of ten feet for turning around, which is, I guess, is fine for a car, but probably not for a fire truck. I don't know if you could-
Are you, are you referring to the, just the schematic of how somebody might be able to build out the, the house on the topographic plans?
Um, I'm looking at sheet twenty of forty-nine.
Yeah.
And that, um, well, that's kinda what we have to go with, right? Looking at that.
Yeah, so I mean-
I realize the design will change as you get onto the land and so forth.
Right, so I mean, I, I'm happy to show larger turnouts on the schematic design. I think we'd be better served if, on the recording sheets, I make note of the fact that turnouts may be required by the fire chief during building permit process.
Okay.
Um, otherwise, I'm, I'm drawing it just to show that it could be done, but it likely isn't gonna be there.
Twenty-three is like four hundred feet into the property.
Right.
Okay, as long as you're gonna take care of that.
But as you say, like, eight dash twenty and eight dash twenty-one, uh, there's a natural T there that we could-
Yeah.
Provide a turnaround at.
And actually, in Twenty-One, you could extend that to the property line, and maybe either have back out a radius there, so you could back into, toward the property line, or it could also be used for snow storage-
Right.
At some point.
Right.
Now, I noticed the two, um, the two dr- long driveways, there's, what, a two-foot difference in elevation on your, uh, driveway schematic that you did?
Elevation-wise?
Elevation-wise, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it's gonna be a green space between the driveways?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Uh, let's see. Got more questions? I guess that's for now, any more questions? Hearing none, thank you.
So, in terms of, uh, the speed data that was taken, I'm happy to ask the accounting company that does the, the accounting for us where that speed data was taken. I don't know that it's overly germane, um, to the application, we provided it because we had it, and it, it is relevant, uh, in terms of what level of safety people are traveling on the roadway. But I think it's important, uh, that I say this pretty emphatically on the record, just because the general public decides to operate their vehicles at a speed that is unsafe, should not take away private rights to development based on their bad decisions. I'm happy to look at and discuss what the average driver is doing on the roadway, um, to see how this project may impact that. But if you had a pile of buffoons driving at a hundred miles an hour, at what point does that take away private property rights from, from somebody to develop their site? Um, and I think it's something that we need to consider. I'm not saying that we don't consider all of the safety aspects of the project, but at some point, there's a limit.
Thank you. Anybody else have, uh, anything you'd like them to address before we, uh, move to the continuance? What would be the date of the continuance, please? Seventh. So is there a motion to continue to November seventh?
I'll make a motion to move to November seventh.
Second.
Roll call? Napa.
Tessie, your eye?
Wes Calani.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number two, two fifty dot, dash thirty-nine, dash NR, dash twenty-three, two lots, owner's Lauren Valier and Zachary Tucker.
Hello, hello. Good evening, folks. I am Joel Runnels, and I'm here to represent Lauren and Zachary for a two-lot subdivision that is located at one hundred ninety Beauty Hill Road. We were here last month, but got continued until we went to the zoning board for a variance to the front setback along the driveway easement. And a special exception to use the driveway easement for the proposed back lot, thirty-nine, one. Both were granted at the September ZBA meeting. I realize the town is concerned about the previous approved site plan that we've had before. I know that, it was concerned that the ZBA meeting as well, and you expressed that my last time here, so I, I know that, and I, I'm working with Zach on, on getting this straightened out for, for us all.
A general comment on that?
Yeah.
So we addressed it at the last meeting, and it's almost like it's been flying in the face, in our face, where it's been nothing but crap lined up in front of the house in the area that was not designated as a space area.
And I, I've talked to him, and what, one of the things I was gonna say is to you is that, I, he's gotta get rid of the trailers, he's, he's, he's got, has way too much-
In school buses.
Yeah. He just has too many there, he knows that, he's trying to get rid of them, and I said, I told him that I'm not- And I said, I told him that I'm not gonna come before the board to plead with him and, and stuff that he needs to fix that right now, and that he needs to fix it to that point that it's acceptable to the, your regulations that I've talked to.
Currently, there are bough houses on the front. Sitting on a trailer with skids underneath.
And a school bus.
Well, a, a school bus.
And some heavy equipment.
Well, I think he's still doing something with the yard, so, uh, active construction maybe.
Code enforcement has no active cases on this case file for the note, so.
And I don't know.
Necessarily need to be.
According to the code enforcement officer, yes.
Just moving dirt, moving dirt around. Okay, sorry, Joe.
Nah, that's very, I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
I get you.
It's not me. I, it's not me, but I'm trying to work with him to get his, his act together to, because I, I understand. I understand what's going on, and I, and I know that you're not gonna approve his site review or modify his site review with it looking like that. So I'm trying to get him to make it look the way it's going to be approved. So we talked about getting rid of the trailers. I, I don't go there every day, so I don't know about the bough houses and stuff, so.
I can show you a picture.
So. But what I was hoping to do tonight is to at least get this application accepted for the subdivision. I, I just, just accept the application. I'm not trying to get approval for this tonight. And that, I realize that it needs to be done in conjunction with a revised site approval for that. And again, I told Zach that I'm not gonna do it until it's, he's fixed it, so. He, he, he knows he's not gonna get the subdivision as well as, until he gets the sub, site, site straightened out for it. But I, I, I understand that. I am trying to work with him, so. The last time I was here, I explained a little bit on the plan here. Would you like me to do that again tonight?
Okay, we do see the ZBA gave him relief on two items. It's on page one. Special exception from Article Four, Section four point one point two lot, front and to allow access to proposed lot thirty-nine dash one from one ninety Beauty Hill Road will be within the proposed thirty-foot wide common driveway easement. Second one, a variance from Article Four, Section four point one, point one, Table two, to allow a fronted setback of nineteen feet with forty is required on one ninety Beauty Hill Road. So I guess we're here just to accept the application.
I think the ZBA's smoking crack, but that's a different issue.
Have to take that up with the ZBA.
So I don't know if you want, again, do you want me to explain the, the subdivision again, or I did it the last time, but whatever.
I remember it, but anybody else wanna go through it again? Quick, wait, yeah, quick.
Sure, sure. So. Back lot, whole area, the whole lot is twelve acres. Back here is a public service easement. Beyond the easement. What, what we've done is I've done a survey for, boundary survey of it all, but we didn't, we limited our wetland delineation in the lot sizing to the easement, and I certainly exceeded those by quite a bit.
Yeah, versus a easement, yeah.
They, they, just a lot out here exceeds the minimum lot size contiguous by, it's at eighty thousand. This one's way, way over. That's just, just contiguous. It's not like the other pieces that it could, I could, could add to it too, so. One of the things we're doing for this also is that because it's twelve acres, it doesn't have sub, state subdivision approval, so this lot will now have to get state subdivision approval, so I'm gonna have to do that. We've gone out and we've done test pits already, uh, to shoot, go two thousand square area on this lot, dollars on this lot. Again, it's, this one doesn't have to go to D, DES, but I showed the four thousand per year regulations as well, so. Guess if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
So you're just asking tonight to maybe just accept the application as complete is the planning department believes everything is required to.
Yes.
Application to be complete.
Yes, um, I don't see any reason the application is complete. The applicant is proposing, um,
It's two waivers.
A couple waivers, um, so I think the board should, um, address those first before accepting the application as complete.
Okay.
They're part of that, but, um, I don't see any reason why the application cannot be complete. He's submitted a full, incomplete application.
Okay, so we'll do the waivers. Crested waivers. Uh, crested waivers, item number six. Yeah, go ahead.
The, the main reasons why the waivers are is that I, I didn't wanna go beyond the, the easement out there. I didn't see the reason for that. And also, you know, due to the site, the, the site features for a budding properties, like I, that would include that I have to do wetland delineation within a hundred feet and things like that, so. That, that's, that's the reason why I'm asking for waivers.
Okay.
The first waiver is the requirement of showing only the structures and features that are on the proposed lot thirty-nine in the area of interest on lot thirty-nine dash one and not outside the AOI or on the budding lots in Article five point three point one parentheses subdivision regulations. Not granting the waiver would pose unnecessary hardship on the applicant, and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Motion to, uh, grant the waiver number one? Sure.
Is there really a hardship to showing? I don't care about whether it's back end. Road down, breaking inside the long driveway on the left. That there were conditions that were put in. Down the permitting of it is trailer shop because of. And now we're shifting all that around.
Would I show, how about if I show it on the site plan? I'll, I'll figure out somehow a way. So I don't wanna trespass, piss people off. Uh, I think I can, I think I can get some of it from granite, show, show it from there.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, but that'd be the only thing I'm still would ask for this waiver.
Okay, so now you're making that motion?
I didn't say that. I asked the question.
Okay. Okay, I'll make the motion. Go ahead, buddy, buddy.
Motion.
Okay, second. Okay, roll call? Okay.
Tessie, your eye.
Driscoll eye, sorry. Uh, number two, the requirement of showing only natural features in around the proposed lot thirty-nine, the area of interest on lot thirty-nine dash one in Article five point three point one parentheses nine of the subdivision regulations. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Any questions on this waiver? Second by buddy? Roll call, please.
Tessie, your eye.
Driscoll eye. Okay. Now we'll vote to accept the application as complete. Is there a motion to do that? Second by buddy? Roll call, please.
Tessie, your eye.
Driscoll eye.
So can I ask for continuous then, since we're gonna move on?
Oh, sure, we could do that. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this application? Anybody online?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against this application? Please raise your hand on teams. And give you a moment to do so. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to speak for or against this application.
Okay. So we need a motion to continue it to the seventh?
I'm probably gonna go further because I gotta get him to straighten out the site, and I, then I have to, then I have to do a site plan of it.
So you wanna not commit yourself to a date at this moment? Oh.
So let's, let's do two months then.
December.
December or January?
Let's try December, hopefully.
December fifth.
Hopefully. I don't know. You're going the wrong way on me.
Okay, is there a motion to continue this application to December fifth, twenty twenty-three? It's only seven fifty-one. Joyce seconded. Okay, roll call.
Capello.
Tessie, your eye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Good Thanksgiving.
Yeah. I always just check with the planning department, think of what's going on. All right, next one is Hambone LLC. That's two-five-three dash fourteen dash GR slash SDAO dash twenty-three dash SR. There's a request to continue this to November seventh by the applicant.
That is correct. We received the, um, motion for continuance after the agenda went out. So there may be people here in the audience or online for this application, but he's requesting a continuance.
Okay, is there a motion to grant the continuance to November seventh? Oh. I wouldn't open it now, but okay. See, see movement.
They also, it's, it's due to, if you read it in letters, because CMA is reviewing their.
Yeah, right.
Just the medals.
Yeah. Should I read the whole thing, Hambone, or that was enough? Request by the applicant for major site plan review, seven multifamily units with, um, with waivers on forty-nine Weekly Pond Road, map two, two fifty-three, lot fourteen, thirteen point four seven acre lot in a stratified drift aqua for overlay in the general residential zoning district by Berry Surveying Engineering. So, request to continue to November seventh.
Oh, you already made a motion.
Yeah.
Oh, you made it.
I already made that motion. And it was seconded by.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Capello.
Tessie, your eye.
Driscoll eye. Great. Next one, new applications, uh, C two, two oh six dash fifteen dash one GR dash twenty-three SR, owners Doug and Marcia Hatch. Pressed by the applicant for minor site plan review for change of use for an existing office and residential building with a waiver on site, map two oh six lot fifteen dash one, located on seventy-three Second Crown Point Road on a two point five four five acre lot in the general residential zoning district.
It is green. Yeah, thank you.
Hello.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Mike Rudolph with Remax Shoreline, and, um, as was said, I'm, uh, here to request, um, a change of use or a switching of the uses, um, of the two buildings that are on site on that plan right now. In our proposal for, uh, review and, and approval, the existing house that's labeled on the plan would become the existing building. That existing building, as you may recall from, uh, my last time here before you, uh, had been granted a conditional use permit for an office. So the existing, uh, building was an office, and in, in our proposal, the, um, the existing building would become the house. So again, we're just requesting a switching or a relabeling of the two buildings that are on the plan. As part of this, um, proposal or package, um, we have a site plan waiver request. Would you like me to go over that, or are you?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so I'm just gonna read this. Um, on our site plan waiver request, um, we receive, we receive, seek relief from Article Three, the site plan specifications and documents. And at the planning board meeting held on eight fifteen twenty-three, which was our conceptual, our request for conceptual review, the board requested that we contact David Mott, who did the plan, to see if he'd be willing to, willing or able, be able to modify the site plan to change the use of the buildings. I did speak with David, uh, almost immediately subsequent to the, to that meeting, and he said that because, um, he doesn't have his, his business anymore. He's moved on to a new company. And in moving on to that new company, uh, there's, he has an agreement with them that basically says that he can't do outside work. So although he did, you know, um, he was respectful, he was nice, but he wasn't, he wasn't able to accommodate, uh, our, our request to actually modify it. So I'm back before you to ask, um, as I had asked before, if, if it would be possible to change the use of the buildings.
So let's, wanted to do, any questions before we proceed to, to the waiver?
I have a question.
Yep.
I, I guess because I'm used to just feeling to ask, what would it take to speak with the person? I understand you as a customer, this, and the board, and so even if there's a kicker or percentage that went to, to the current company.
So I, I guess in my, my answer to that, I didn't, I didn't go there. I mean, we've requested, I've talked to David on maybe two or three occasions. In fact, the Hatches, uh, have spoken with him, I believe, once on this as well. So I can't speak to, I can't answer your question directly, but what I, what I can say is we have, we really have asked him, and, and if, um, I believe that if he was able to, um, he would have volunteered that, because I, I, I don't think, I think to me, he, he would have wanted to try to do it, but I didn't go to, I didn't have that, uh, I didn't ask the question that you're asking me or asking.
Question of the board was to ask him, right?
Correct.
And, and he asked and answered, so.
That's correct.
Right. Any more questions? Okay, applicant, proceed to the waivers. Sound good? Applicant has requested waivers for site plan review regulations. Requirement for site plan specifications per Section three point one of the site plan review regulations. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Is there a motion to grant the waiver?
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver.
Buddy seconded. Roll call, please.
Somebody else's plan.
Capello?
Aye.
Tessie, your eye.
Driscoll eye. Anybody wanna speak on this? Oh, right, we didn't do that, right. Vote, uh, is there a motion to, uh, accept the application as complete?
I'll make a motion to accept the application as complete.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Joyce Capiello. Roll call, please.
Capello.
Tessie, your eye.
Driscoll eye. Yep.
Yes.
Yep. Is there anybody, um, have a comment on this, or, yeah, any comments on this?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against this application? I do see Mr. Mott online, but I don't know if he's making public comment.
Not waving his hand?
Nope, not waving his hand, no.
Okay.
I don't see anybody here.
Okay, I'm closing public comment. Just proceed to the NOD. Just proceed to the NOD. Um, any further discussion? Or go to the notice of decision, anybody, further comments?
My comment in general is I don't have a real issue with it, it's just one of those, like, from a customer's standpoint.
Yeah, I understand.
To make sure our records are accurate. It should be corrected. Because now you're gonna have a stamped survey plan with.
Well, it kind of put the guy into a box, I mean, unless you wait for the guy to retire from his current job and be able to speak to this, he couldn't.
Well, we've already granted the waiver for it anyway.
We did, so just, you know. Okay, uh, notice of decision, I'm losing my voice.
Um, this is to inform you at the Barrington Planning Board at its October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, adopt, approved your avocation reference for a minor site plan review for a change of use for the existing office and residence building.
Oh, thank you.
Reviewed in accordance with Town of Barrington's Site Plan Review Regulations for non-residential uses and multifamily dwelling units amended May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and the Barrington zoning ordinance amended March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Application has met Town ordinances and regulations of Town of Barrington. At the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Board meeting, the board approved waiver for the requirement for a site plan specifications per Section three point one of the Site Plan Review Regulations. Thank you very much, wish you the best luck on your project.
Okay. Motion to accept a notice of decision? Grant the notice of decision, is there a motion? For discussion? Buddy Hackett?
I'll second.
Tessie here, seconded, roll call please.
Cap Mac.
Capiello.
Tessie, your eye.
Triscoll, eye. Great.
Just brother, I have the name still the same.
It's all just because there's a stamp plan that now has basically has laid out on it that was not approved by the guy who sent the plan.
Call up Joseph Heller, seems like a catch twenty-two.
It could be. And I mean, like I said, it's not a zing at anybody, it's just you have this process.
Mm-hmm, I get you. Item number three, two thirty-eight dash fifty dash TC dash twenty-three dash SR. Owners Greg Bolton, six oh six Franklin Pierce Highway LLC. Requested by the applicant for a minor site plan review to install two forty-eight panel trackers with a waiver on a three point zero one acre site, map two thirty-eight, lot fifty. Location is at six oh six Franklin Pierce Highway in the Town Center zoning district. This has been postponed until the November meeting.
It has asked to request to be moved to the, or continued, excuse me, to the November seventh meeting due to that he is out of town, since the meeting was moved, he could not make the date.
Okay, is there a motion to continue this to November seventh?
I'll make a motion to continue to the seventh.
I'll second it.
Joyce Capiello, seconded, roll call please.
Navai.
Capiello.
Tessie, your eye.
Triscoll, eye. Next item. One, item number four, one twenty-one dash twenty-eight dash GR dash twenty-three dash SR. Owner Todd Green, Barrington Shores LLC. Requested by the applicant for a minor site plan review to update improved site plan layout of twenty-four seasonal campsites and roads, map one twenty-one, lot twenty-eight, located at Severnton Barrington Shores Drive, on a twenty-four point eight acre site in the general residential zoning district. Hello.
Good evening, Todd Green, Barrington Shores. Welcome. Yeah, it's green. We're just looking to. Please.
The existing one, or the one that you reviewed?
Um, I guess the new one, the new one. So because of the, we took off the, we had, we had, we had a water problem in the safari field, which is the lower part where the new septic system is. And the water was coming off the street, so they, they proposed that you put in a new, redesign the septic system and raise the ground. And we found the dirt up top, the topography would come down, there wasn't ledge or anything, so we took the dirt from up top, brought it down to raise up the level of the ground, so the topography is now, doesn't have the elevations that it had to begin with. So now we're just looking to straighten out all the sites and put them in rows instead of having them all over the place from the old site. So there's a, it gives, it gives a larger roadway and it doesn't have a dead end in it. And we're just trying to get the sites more aligned for ease of use, fire apparatus coming in, and getting the sites in and stuff.
Same number of sites?
Same, yeah, same setbacks, same everything, without adding any lighting or anything like that. We're just looking to realign the twenty-four sites, so it's easier accessible for the fire department and the campus and everything else. Yep, same setbacks, everything.
Doesn't, it doesn't, so the footprint's generally the same, but if you look at the berm and the, it's been wadded in there, all of those trees are gonna die out. Like, everything that was talked about being retained and controlled.
The, what happened was, when we went up there, the arborist, they, they looked at all the pines that were up there, were all dead. And then when they, when he, he was talking to me and he's like, I honestly didn't want the trees, I'm, I'm a little disappointed the trees are gone, we're gonna have to plant new ones and stuff in there. But with the root structure and then cutting in through for all, the way the design was, the old design for the septic and stuff, it would have cut to the roots and it would have killed all the trees in the middle anyway. So that's what we were up against at that point in time. So the decisions kind of, then we had the water problem. So we didn't know what to do with that because of the water that was coming in off the streets, was flooding the safari field. And they proposed to put in, improve the septic system to deal with the water coming in on top of it. So the, the, what we had to do was bring it down. And when we lowered it, now instead of the sites being up on top and everyone can visually see the sites, it's now lower, the berm is there, you're only gonna see maybe the tops of the, the campers, which I figured at that point in time is gonna lower the sound and the visuals for the neighbors in the, in the, in that area also.
Typically, when you do a berm, though, you do it into your already cleared area. Historically, if you look, there's either a dirt berm that's brought in, a lot of times just in wood chips. This is all filled into your non-disturbed hundred-foot area, the berm is pushed in there, and now it's four and a half feet up on your trees. You're gonna kill every tree that the berm has piled into.
They're gonna put the vegetation back and stuff like that and put the grass and stuff.
Destroy the entire vegetated buffer that we talked about when we approved the plan. And it's not in alignment with what was discussed from that. But I don't think there's much you can do about it at this point.
No. There's nothing I can do. The way, it's the way the plan went, it wasn't my intention to do it, it's just, it's just what happened.
But bullets left the gun and we have to deal with the aftermath. How is that reason for our board to have to come back and now be like, oh yeah, we're cool with it? When the initial conversation was, you're gonna end up ruining all the trees and so why not just make a plan to cut them everywhere, and it's, no, 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 we're not gonna do it. Then you did that, and then now you gotta eventually.
That wasn't, that wasn't discussed, we were trying to keep all the trees and with everybody, and everyone was trying to keep the trees, and that's what we were try, that's what we tried to do. We tried to go up there and save the trees, and what happened was when they went up there and cut them, because the pines, once you cut, once you cut the trees around them, the pines that were set out there, they were saying, they're, they're all death traps. You have to get rid of them. And that was not, not to my knowledge at that point in time either. And again, I'm a little disappointed with what happened, but this is what I'm left with at the time. So what we're trying to do is make it so it's designed to, aesthetically, they're in line, instead of them being all over the place. We're using the same drainage system, even though the, the topography has dropped, it's not gonna, the runoff is way less than what it would have ever been, we're still using the same drainage and everything else with the plan, all I'm looking to do is just realign the sites to what that plan is saying there, and it's all still inside the.
To Andy's point, what is the final plan? That berm right now, quite honestly, it looks like hell, it's just gravel.
It's still under construction.
Right, so.
Right.
In the end, what do you anticipate that looking like?
Putting in the vegetation like we talked about. Grass and, grass in the, the wall, or whatever the, the berm I should say. And then, you know, filling in vegetation like we talked about.
So you're looking for conditional approval. But we, you say here it's under construction, so we have to somehow put in here that what we're looking for at the end of the construction would be part of the conditions. It would be, it would comply with the. Yeah.
So the applicant has.
The applicant will adhere to the recommendations of Andy Fast and UNH Cooperative Extension in Urban Tree Service for the fullest extent possible. So they're the people that are advising you on the green belt?
They did, yes.
And they continue to do that?
We haven't spoke with them.
So I took though to address the board. The subsequent conditions were taken from the original notice of decision, since the project is still underway. They had met their conditions precedent to get their plans signed. Though the remaining ones on here are what was from the previous application. If there's other things that you feel that should be addressed, this is the, the place to do it. Probably under the general and subsequent conditions, if you're talking about after their construction, like grassing the berm or those types of actions.
I think the hard part is when you look at this, between that and then excavation for the septic field and all, and all the fill that's been brought in, you're probably pretty close to way over an AOT at that point. I mean.
There wasn't any fill brought in, we just down from the top to stop, to stop the water problem that was coming from the streets.
Lot of horse leaving the barn, I think. That's the.
Yeah, I, I agree. But I'd like to focus on how we're gonna make this green belt viable and.
Hopefully after we can pull down some of the dirt around the trees that's up there from the construction, move it to wherever it needs to go, so that those trees will have a chance and stuff like that, and then,
Unfortunately, we don't have a town forester that can check this stuff out, but any wording you think we should add on the conditions, general? Yeah, they mentioned the, he will adhere to the recommendations of the UNH Cooperative Extension in the Urban Tree Service to the fullest extent possible, but you're not dealing with them any longer, right?
Not at the moment.
Yeah.
And there was an architecture to the planting for the whole park.
Right.
So, so you still.
It's still can continue with the, with the planting plan, is what our, what our, what our thought process is.
But your, your planting plan is different, because you now fill four plus feet of dirt along all those trees.
Yep.
Your birches, your maples, and all those pines end up dying out.
Or we can.
You're into the, the park line of the plant down in a root. You're gonna, so everything for the next few years is gonna die off. All in that vegetated.
Well, unless they pull it all out and adhere to the original plan.
We can move, we can move it back around if we had to.
I mean, I, I like, I'll candidly, I like the idea of a.
Me too.
But usually when you do a berm, you put body of your, clear your forest line, and then you lay your berm. You create a nice mounted berm.
But you've done that. Well, again, it's still under construction, so what we plan on.
But it's all pushed into the wood line, that's what I'm saying is. It's gonna slash everything, try and pull it out, I don't know.
Smaller machine.
They could do the berm, I just, to get it all, I mean, they pushed it all in there. How to treat it, this is support. I think it should be cleaned up and done in a nice, and planted, but.
Item number three on the existing general and subsequent conditions is the applicant's engineer shall certify and writing improvements have been constructed as approved prior to the issuance of a certificate of completion. Uh, that's kind of a general statement, I guess that would concern even the green belt, right?
Correct.
You couldn't put, as for the board, you could put other things in there too, if you want.
Yeah, I can put, including the green belt.
Whatever you guys agree to, I mean.
Including the agreed.
It's a template for you guys, and you can always change it, take it out.
Including the agreed to green belt.
Original plan.
Yep. The original plan. Um.
I like the roof, I think the roof is a much better.
Yeah.
Yeah, the layout sounded an issue with me.
No, I don't have an issue, it's just that.
And we're, and we're concerned about that too, I mean, we don't want anything dying up there, I mean, the whole purpose of coming to the campground is for the trees. So we're gonna try, once we get the layout and get everything in, then we're gonna start trying to put the trees back inside to, you know, shade it and green it up again and deal with the corners and stuff that we were dealing with in there. So it's, it's, it's a concern of mine, it's just, you know, I'm just halfway through this point and I'm looking to get this so that I can continue on, finish, and then finish the berm and the greening and stuff like that, that was gonna be done last anyway. A part of the plan, because it's just the machinery that's moving around up there.
Twenty twenty. Manscaped plan?
I could go back and pull from the old plan set, then I, when I grab my packet of stuff here.
You wanna, I can give you the, you wanna look at the pile? I do.
Just pass it down.
Thought I had a thing bring with me and collection of junk. So where's all the water going?
Doesn't come into the property, it rolls into the culvert. And we have an issue where it rolls into the driveway now. Which it, it had been doing, but it's just, since they did the road and everything else, they raised it or whatever, we're just finding water issues. Especially with all the rain this year. I mean, it really brought to our attention, which we really didn't notice before, I mean, we got some in the springtime and stuff like that, but this year with all the rain, it just kept coming. So it was an issue with the septic and everything else.
Depends who you talk to. So the fire hose is not part of your permanent plan now?
No. No, no, it's, it's, it's an issue though, because it rolled down, actually, we, with all the rain, it's happened before, but in front of the, the office, it filled in with water. So, you know, it was extreme here, water, but.
Well, let's hope.
Yeah.
Let's hope this isn't.
Doesn't come this winter. Doesn't come this winter.
Did you find that uh, plan from twenty twenty?
Yeah, I was looking at the.
Yeah, the landscape plan.
The land, yeah. So I'm assuming, and I'll say assuming, that the safari campground is not so much a campground anymore?
Safari field? No, there were sites out there, we just, we just couldn't use them because of the water.
But is that uh. But I have a septic, it looks like a much larger septic.
Yeah.
But there, how's that gonna work with.
This, it doesn't take, it doesn't go into the sites, doesn't go into the sites.
Okay.
And it's a cement thing, so they can, it's like our other septic up on the uh, field, they can pack on it.
They're driving over with campers over your leach field?
Nope, around it, but there is a spot that we have, another one where it's got the uh, cement chambers where you can drive over it. It was designed for that purpose, in case somebody does drive over it, it's fine. But put the extra time and effort, money into it.
Just the.
Yeah, because of the water issues with them coming down there, it was, we were raising it up and going down, it was just, it would have been an issue. So we brought somebody in to help us design something new and they proposed raising the field, spending the extra money on it and, and stopping the water from coming in so that everything could work properly.
I mean, the vegetated plan could still be applicable if you.
What's the date on that plan?
Do you want, or did? October thirteenth.
Do you have the date on it?
Yes, I must have found the December one too.
They're talking about agitation.
Oh, vegetation. For thirteen.
But veget- is vegetation different than the landscape?
There's a landscape, LS one is the one.
Oh, yeah, LS ones. Well, you can put states in there and it'll cover everything.
Ten thirteen, twenty twenty, if you just construct that as the. That on the lot, it's twelve, one twenty eight, twelve, it could look like twelve.
I got something, but we'll go with thirteen though.
Or twelve.
You got twelve something.
But it's ten, ten thirteen, twenty twenty.
Okay, October's good.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it, but I would like, my big thing is I would want somebody to come back out and redo that, look at that, because I, I think what's gonna happen is you're gonna kill off everything.
We'll have somebody come out and when the, when the construction stops and see what we need to do for that stuff. I, again, I don't wanna lose another tree.
Yep.
Between, between me and you, I really don't.
Lose everything in that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Those are a motion to accept the application as complete.
Make a motion to accept the application as complete.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Capella.
Tess, you're right.
Just go ahead. Uh, public comment, anybody wanna comment on this application?
Let's have more.
Yep.
Anybody does um.
Mr. Chairman, there is someone online that would like to speak, is there anybody here first in the audience that would like to speak for or against it? I might have missed that, no, okay, um, Mr. Matt Nice.
Nice.
Go ahead, thank you.
Hi, yeah, I am a resident on Rosemary Lane. Um, I am not a direct butter, but I am the president of our road association over here in, um, I am kind of mixed on what I'm hearing. I do like the fact that Todd Green has taken the time and effort to improve the site. I believe what he is doing is right and I'm looking out for our community here on Rosemary Lane that abuts his property. Um, with that being said, I would like to just share some of my thoughts on tonight's review of the site plan. And um, I'd like to speak for our butters that are on Rosemary Lane and for Lutzi Pantano on Hall Road. Um, basically, looking at the site plan that uh, was being shown. Um, it's hard to see on my phone because I can't distinctly see all the site numbers. I agree that um, you know, Todd seems very concerned about keeping the vegetation in the trees. And I would like to ask the board that we consider making sure that the vegetation that does get put in actually thrives in that area and does not die off. Um, a year or two or five or even ten years down the road, just to give our residents the privacy from the campers. And I'm sure um, Todd would agree with me on this. Um, what I would also like to share is the lowering of the sites. Um, knowing that there's being a request for a berm. In the comments from the board about disturbing some of the roots and the things that abut the lots around the butters on Rosemary Lane. I believe there are sites, it looks like eighteen, nineteen and maybe number six, if somebody can confirm that. Those are the sites that are around the rounded points on the far end that abut Rosemary Lane. Somebody have that in front of them where they can confirm those numbers?
Eighteen, nineteen and four.
Yep.
Okay, it could be four, it, it's, like I said, it's hard to see on my phone. Um, I would, I would like to propose a little bit of a give and take if one were to be uh, put out onto the table. Is it possible that those sites could be removed from the plan to allow the buffer along Rosemary Lane to be a little bit more of a buffer where the vegetation is being disrupted and allow for the sites that abut the eighteen, nineteen and number four to be a little bit larger as a compromise to give a larger site for those ones that are on the corners. But give us a little bit of a buffer area to ease the encroachment on our um, people's backyards of our residents that live on Rosemary Lane. Due to the fact that there is gonna be a berm there now, we're gonna lose more of the trees that we were not originally, um, when we did the site walk, maybe a year and a half ago. Um, you know, there was a lot of vegetation there and we said, oh, this is great because it's not bad. Todd is gonna put up a fence, he's gonna add some additional shrubbery. Um, you know, would we be able to consider maybe a slightly taller fence where there's a berm now and the vegetation is being removed due to being um, a hazard to uh, the campers that would be in those sites due to the trees being disrupted and their roots and the excavation and everything going on. Those are just some of our residents' concerns on um, the current changes to this plan. And again, I'm willing to um, try to work both sides with the planning board and with the campground and make this work for all of us. I'm not trying to fight it, I'm not trying to be against it and neither the residents of Rosemary Lane. But yet, we do need some sort of a respectable buffer in place to give us our privacy that we've had in the past. And from what we were told from the original plan, this has been a little bit more of a change than what we were expecting. And we understand Hall Road was paved, it was raised up, we understand the water issues, we respect that. And we're just asking the board for help and Todd Green for help to keep harmony between the campground, Rosemary Lane and do what's right. Um, and at this point in time, I'd just like to ask if Todd Green or anybody on the board has any questions for me.
Comment? Um, no, we don't, thank you.
And is Todd Green have any questions?
No.
Okay, and like I said, I'm willing to, you know, try to get our residents over here all on board and I would like to work as a community. And we're not against this, like I had pointed out, but at the same time, you know, we would like to just ask for a better buffer knowing that the buffer that we were told we were gonna have is now being um, changed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm gonna read this, um, we also received a, a letter from Jacob, Jacob Goodwin, who said he could not be here tonight. And his comment is, I live in one ninety-three Hall Road in Barrington. I received a letter in the mail this past Friday about an upcoming meeting concerning the campground development. Unfortunately, I'm not able to get there. My concerns are about light pollution and if the camp intends to add more lighting. We hope that no additional lights will be installed and that the campground might consider putting current lights on motion sensors, especially in the on, uh, in the off season. Um, I also wondering if there will be fencing or shrubbery added. Uh, I hadn't realized that the Eden tent to which the lower field would be raised up. Thank you, Jake Goodwin. Put that in the record.
There are no lights, we discussed that.
Okay.
In the previous one where they would talk about putting lights up there and then nobody want them and we don't want them. There's enough lights with the campers and their little front lights out there and stuff, that's plenty lit.
And.
Question that I had.
We discussed that, we discussed that the first time, we said there would be no lights.
Oh, closed public hearing.
Um, so the, the one question I have is now that you cut, brought that hill down so much, does that create an impact with light travel from a main building in the main parking area over this space?
No, the only, the only one light we have is the one in front of the office. And we're, we're planning on putting shrubs around the front corner down there to stop that anyway. And if it, if it becomes a problem, you know, they can call us and just say, you know, we're looking for something for the off season to put it on, what do you call them, we can handle that, no problem.
Traffic wise, I'm assuming cars driving in there now that that's been brought down.
It's not gonna be shining on people's. I, I thought it was a benefit to everybody with it being lowered, where the, the sound's not gonna go through, it'll echo up instead of going through the, you know, fire pits and stuff like that. Five to six feet. I don't know for sure, I'm kinda giving you a ballpark.
Yeah, theoretically, the lighting with a berm should be less of an impact. Uh, the next one I have is the, the Persian and Murray, Persian and the buffer. Um, it, looking at your, your proposed plan set, you got the berm kinda running all the way around.
Hmm, all the way around, so there's no runoff at all. We had an issue at one point where the water blew over and went down um, over the, over the edge, so we built that up, that was part of the problem. And was, again, we, we've lowered it so there is no more run with the water and we're u, we're still using the same drainage plan for the old topography.
So is the water.
We, we actually, through all this, through all this rain, we don't have any grooves or anything where it's tearing through, like on some of the areas in the other hills, where it tears off the soil and rolls it away. We don't have any of that up there right now, at all.
Right, the place where I don't see a berm is where it gets to the back between sites one, two and three that.
There's, there's a berm there, yeah, there's, there's a, there's a buildup. And there's, there'll, there'll be like a French drain inside that area and then we're gonna be putting a tank in to catch all the water that comes all the way down and around, that's the, the one point it wants to go, so we're gonna catch it and bring it into the three chamber.
I saw the line.
System.
Yeah, I see the, that line.
And then it goes into the uh, the retention pond.
So I guess my one concern is your, your berm's probably gonna occupy ten to fifteen feet.
Yeah, it's smaller. Uh, probably ten feet, it will give it to you, yeah, ten feet, I'm not gonna argue.
And with the height is, true, yeah.
You're talking about the, the actual depth of the berm, when you look at the, the width and the depth.
Well, because we came down, it's just kind of down, so it's kind of, it's not massive, kind of, because we cut down, it kind of, it's got the two pitch or whatever the pitch that Ray was suggesting.
So it's, it's a bowl on the inside and then the outer edge is there, but if you look at it, if you drive by and look at it, you can.
It's under construction.
So a, again, that's gonna create an impact to the vegetation around there, so making sure that that's accounted for.
We plan on keeping that, that buffer there like we talked about, for the, for, you know, I don't wanna disturb the neighbors. And, and we're trying to do, again, the first thought was if we, when we did lower it, there were benefits to them also in, in the process. The, the light, the, the campfires, the sites of the campers, the, the lights of the uh, people pulling up there and stuff like that, they're not gonna see people coming around, at least not as much. I'm not gonna say it will be totally out, but it's pretty flat where they're not gonna be shining lights into people's houses and stuff.
And there was a fence noted in the other plan set that I don't.
Um, that was just a, what do you call it then?
Did it still be there or?
I don't know if you guys still want it, I don't know where it's, I don't know what it's gonna do at this point in time. I mean, it would almost be an eyesore at that point in time, and if you put it behind the berm, it's still gonna only show up three or four feet above it. I'm thinking if we plant shrubbery on top, that's up even higher instead of the fence, which is, you know, manmade instead of it being a vegetation. Before it was, and the contour with the fence was gonna be, we were talking six feet, eight feet and stuff to keep the lineup. And that was to keep the site away from everybody, which we've taken care of by lowering the sites. So that's kind of, you know, I mean, if we put it behind the berm, it's only gonna be sticking up four feet if it's even that. So is it, is it, you know, we'd put that in or we'd put vegetation and stuff? I think the fence would, wouldn't look as, as nice compared to the vegetation, that's just my opinion.
So the one-way road going around, let's say the road between um, seven and eight and fifteen. Is that uh, traffic goes down there and makes the left turn to exit, headlights gonna, the berm and the, and the green on top of the berm will shade out any headlights? I guess that was the purpose of the fence originally.
Well, just the berm will, because now it's dug down six feet.
Yeah, that's.
At some spots, it's even, it's even deeper, I would think, I don't know the exact measurement of what it came down.
The only other item I had, two items I had was, it, um, in the original plan, you showed, you showed the campers and, the campers and Safari Field, but they're not in the new plan. So putting them back in is to how that would look.
Say that one more time.
You have, in the original plan, you showed the, the campers around Safari Field, they're not in your scene plan set.
Uh, well, it's just still part of the old plan, I guess, that's gonna be the same. Be thirteen.
Right, but because this becomes the new plan set, it should show that it should be complete in the way this one was put together to show it.
Well, it, alright, that's fine.
Well, the, the plan, so they don't show, they don't show the campers.
Which would be over here.
Set shows the campers and across.
On this, on this little one here.
I was just figuring that, I think me and Ray talked about it, that would be sufficient for the plan, because we weren't cha, we're not. Cause we weren't cha, we're not changing anything down. All we did was raise it. So that, you know, this, all we're looking for is the alignment of the sites to be in a row. So it looks a little more conformed and stuff. That's all we were going for.
And then the, the only other item I would say is making sure we have.
Oh, okay. I don't have any. Okay, that's the old one. Okay. Gotcha. Sorry, we're just trying to check the Safari Field.
And then just an up, an updated landscape plan to show what that's all gonna look.
I can talk to Ray and help him get that done for me.
Yeah. Surely.
And really, the new plan actually has two less campsites obdding Rosemary Lane.
That's a good question.
Yes.
And again, if the trailers are in there that the sites, when they come back around, it'll be blasting into the campus and not going into the.
Do you want an updated landscape plan?
There's the original.
Yeah, the original one. And we're referring to that, right? In our additions to the. N O D.
I mean, it's.
The only thing I'm, the only thing I'm kind of fighting.
I mean, I think it's already done. Like the damage is already.
Right.
Been done. So the, the part is we rectify in a way that one makes looks favorably for Barrington shores as well as the neighbors around them and makes the best environment for everybody in and around that space possible.
Right. Okay. So we'll just add those remarks to the notice of decision. Move forward. Yeah.
Right.
It's conditional approval. So he, he has to come in for a final.
It just.
I can move forward with the design though, because I need, I'm running against time here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's, we're not trying to.
Right.
Yeah.
It was just what I need to finish off when I come back to see.
Alright. Okay, Vanessa, would you like to read the notice of decision?
You guys ready for that?
I think we're ready. We are definitely ready for it.
And I may need you guys to reiterate how exactly you want to say it, but. At the Barrington Planning Board, October 17th, 2023 meeting, conditionally approved the application referenced above. It was reviewed in accordance with the Town of Barrington Site Planner Regulations for Non-Residential Uses and Multi-Family Dwelling Units, amended May 17th, 2022, and the Barrington Zoning Ordinance amended March 28th, 2023. The application has met all the town ordinances, regulations of Town of Barrington. All of the precedent conditions must be met by the applicant at the expense of the prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of plans is required prior to commencement of site work or recording of any plans. Once these conditions, precedent conditions are met, the plans are cited approval and considered final. If the precedent conditions are not met within 12 calendar days to calendar months to the day, October 17th, 2024, the board's approval would be considered elapsed unless the mutual agreeable extension granted to the board. Conditions precedent. What I heard is to add to the plat, plan notes to reference the landscape plan and the original plan. Reference as the overall buffer enhancement area plan, LS dash one dated 10/30/2020, to add but just put camper Safari. Details of the camper layout and the Safari Field. There are any, for those conditions precedent, those are the two that I heard the most. I know you talked about fencing, but I don't know.
I think with the new topography, the fencing is.
Is not really needed.
This is where the landscape plan becomes a critical component.
Very important, right.
In there because that's gonna address this whole fence concern issue.
So, but you feel like this landscape plan is sufficient? You wanna see a new one?
Minus the, the fence.
No, I don't think the landscape plan is sufficient in its existing state because what it, the landscape plan was designed with a fence.
System.
And to plug in periodic trees. Now all of a sudden you got a berm in there and you've got to account for landscaping all along that berm.
What kind of landscaping would you, as the board, like to see in it then? Like, how do you want us to approve it? Cause when he comes back with landscape plan, if you're like, if the chair is like, okay, well, I guess I have to sign off on it. Cause they're providing a new landscape plan. Is there a certain?
We're looking for a certain height of landscaping to be built upon the.
I don't know.
I think it would all have to, if, it would all have to, the landscape should all accommodate what the fence was gonna accomplish.
Makes sense. Yep.
And I think it will look better this way, but it still needs to provide the same level of protection that will originally approved, approved.
Referring to that plan doesn't make sense.
The only reason, cause the notice of decision is what? Being able to adhere to what was discussed in meeting or whatever. And that wasn't explicitly stated before in the other notices. And I just wanna make sure I have it correct.
Well, the other notice of decision had a landscape plan, but now the landscape is different.
I know. So now it'll be a green landscape plan that's similar to the protection offered by the fence.
Right.
Okay.
Good word that.
Going with what she said. Your microphone's on, right?
What she said.
Okay, it was on. Yes. Okay. And then prior to obtaining board signature, the applicant shall submit three full-size copies of the site plans. One 11 by 17 copy and a PDF A file format with supporting documents as required, as required in Article Three of the Barrington Site Plan Review Regulations. The letter explained how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval to Land Use Office. The planning board chairs shall sign and date all plans, meaning the conditions of approval. The board shall endorse three full-size copies of the site plans for their records and one 11 by 17 copy, PDF A file format, the case file folder. Now for the general and subsequent conditions, where there is no active and substantial work required on this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date the plan is signed, approval shall expire. An extension not to exceed one year may be granted by a majority vote of the board so long as it is applied for at least 30 days prior to the expiration date. The board may grant only one such extension in any proposed site plan. But I'm getting feedback on that. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being expenditure of at least 25% of the infrastructure improvements required under this approval. Infrastructure shall mean in this instance, construction of roads, storm drains, and improvements indicated in the site plan. Reference RSA 67439. I have on here, the applicant will adhere to the recommendation of Andy Fast of the UNH Cooperative Extension and Urban Tree Service the fullest extent possible. Does that sound like that you'd no longer use him? It's in our discussions before.
I have no problem with him. I just don't know, you know, we just gotta get in touch with him again.
Okay.
If that's the case. And if not, I'll find somebody else that's acceptable.
I mean, our approval is based on a specific person being referenced.
Yeah, I would just maybe leave UN Cooperative Extension in. They can help you, but not a particular guy.
I don't know why. Maybe he's the one that did it last time. It's by why. And the last number three, the applicant's engineer saw certify in writing their improvements have been constructed as a, as approved prior to issuance of a certificate of completion to include to, to the grade landscaping on the overall buffer enhancement area plan.
That sounds sufficient to everyone. I missed part of that.
Thank goodness it's reported and I can provide you a copy tomorrow.
Okay. Is there a motion to grant this notice of decision?
I move to grant this motion of decision.
I'll second it.
Well, I'll second it. Roll call, please.
F P L O I.
Just your I.
Just the I. Okay.
Thanks a lot. Have a nice night.
Hey, good luck. Uh, item number five.
Before you go to item number five, this is Matt Nicewonder from Rosemary Lane.
Okay.
I would just like to offer my services to work with God, Todd Green on the green landscape plan. And if he would like to reach out to me or I can reach out to him to work together to try to get something that works for.
Pardon me. He's already, he's already left the room. So he's not hearing you. Maybe you could just, yeah, just call the campground.
Okay. Alright, I just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it.
Might make your next meeting, you know, easier. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, appreciate it.
Are you here for the Gorus Revocable Trust?
No, but I, did I miss the 49 Weekly Pond Road?
That was early. Yeah, they've asked for a continuance.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, we did that like an hour ago. Sorry.
Well, I know they left, but it's like, where's 49 Weekly Pond Road?
Yeah, the, I guess they're still getting their things together. So.
Their still, their plans are still being reviewed by our town engineers. They've asked for continuance.
Oh, so it's gonna be next month?
Uh, November 7th. Okay, sorry about that.
Hope you'll come back.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. Okay. So we're looking at 263 dash seven dash R, RC slash SDOA dash 23 dash SR on a Gorus Revocable Trust. Uh, please come forward. Are you Mr. Wit, Richard? Okay. Who's representing the applicant?
So, um, good evening. I'm Joe Wickert and we prepared the plan in front of you this evening. And on one level, it's a fairly straightforward application, but as all things, I guess something has to come up to make it more challenging. So this is an existing site. It's lot seven on Tax Map 263. It's a 1079 Caleb Road. The planning board had previously approved this site for auto sales back in 2014. One of your approval conditions specifically excluded a residential use in the property. Uh, the applicant had purchased the property in either June or July of this year. My understanding is, it certainly appears like there had always been a residence there. So, um, you know, we're kind of restarting new. So we'd like to kind of go through and try to, try to make everything complying. So as part of that, um, the main use is gonna stay the same. That won't change at all. So like the, I don't know what we're calling this, the northeast of the edge of the building, that's where the auto sales is. There's a parking field to the north of the building that'll stay the same. The, if you look at on the lower part, there's a little breakdown with the square footage is. There's the two-bedroom apartment, which is sort of into the middle of the building. Uh, kind of southwest of that is a garage. It was a shorter garage. And I guess it was in poor condition. So what ended up happening is a little bit before we were kind of actually ready to submit here, uh, the roof caved in on that garage. So they had started to make some repairs. Uh, we had been in front of the planning board, I think, um, conceptually in April or May, uh, had a generic conversation about what do we wanted to do. Unfortunately, when they were doing the repairs, they didn't get the necessary permits. It became, you know, there was a, a thought that they were trying to make improvements on the structure without permits. So that, which wasn't the case. So we kind of, we submitted the application and plan just to kind of make sure everybody knew that that's what we're doing. We're not trying to do anything underhanded. And the applicant has also, my understanding is Edward's been working with the code enforcement officer and trying to resolve it. So the new parts of this application are the southerly part. So we'd like to have this automotive garage, which was always an automotive garage, but my understanding was sort of part of or accessory to the auto sales. This would be a standalone garage. And then there would be some office space on the very end, which I'm not quite sure what that had previously been used for. In the application packet, we had asked for a waiver on the wetlands. We asked for that waiver because you had a deadline coming up. And unfortunately, our wetland scientist was running long with the weather that was going on. So the initial submission that we had, had, we'd digitized, excuse me, we had digitized the wetlands line from the 2014 plan. But subsequent to our submission prior to this hearing or even the last hearing, we had actually had a wetland scientist go out there. He's delineated the wetlands. We've shown those wetlands on the plans. Wetlands are actually pretty similar to what was last time. The only thing that's kind of different is our wetland scientist found a little island of uplands in here, whereas I think before it just kind of continued on. So there's really no significant changes there. The intent was to make this a change of use. There wouldn't be any real physical changes to the property. We believe we have enough parking per the zoning ordinance and you know, we were hoping it would sort of be not a lot of physical site issues. Vanessa had sent me the staff report and in that staff report, there was the comments from your road agent. And today I got, I think it was either today or tomorrow, uh, today or yesterday, sorry. But there was a, the road agent had expressed another concern over this driveway. So it's the driveway that comes, that services the garage in this southerly portion of the building. And it comes out and it, and it comes in very close to the intersection of Newtown Plains Road and 125. It's kind of weird geometry. It's really not like a 90-degree intersection. It's like a, an X, a weird X. And so I certainly understand the concern. And I guess before, you know, we kind of go into different options, I guess I was hoping to find out what the planning boards thought were. Our, when I was talking to Edward, Edward is here earlier. He had just flown back from Europe and I don't know, I guess it was two o'clock. He thought it was two in the morning. So he was kind of fading out. So he went home. You know, there will probably be more traffic to the garage than what used to be there prior. We're not necessarily expecting a, a huge amount of traffic. But certainly from the road agent's comments, I guess this is an intersection that's been a problem for a while. And so we're, we certainly don't want to do anything that exacerbates that. I kind of assume what happens here is that driveway gets located here, cause that gives you the, the longest line of sight before you hit the crown, uh, the midpoint of that curve. You got about two, two 20 to it and you can see it. So, you know, the problem with it, I assume is if you're coming by here, you know, if you're coming, somebody's coming up fast, probably can see them, but it's, it's, you know, it's probably skinny. And then when you're trying to, if you're coming, um, it's probably more of an issue if you're heading north on 125. Trying to make that like three-quarter turn, you kind of probably swing out a little bit more than you would normally on a 90-degree intersection. We, Edward and I had talked about different options we'd have, you know, and I'm not sure there's a great option. So I guess there, we're, we're looking for input from the board. You know, if you were to take this, you know, if you wanted to relocate this driveway, I think you'd have to be like almost right here at the midpoint of the curve, which is like the low point. Just so you'd have the biggest line of sight looking up and looking this way. Problem with that is that puts us really close to that wetlands, right? And so that's gonna, I think the way I was reading your ordinance, that might mean that we're gonna end up going before the zoning board for a variance to do so. You know, if we keep it here, you know, we had looked at different ways that we could maybe try to, try to make it a little bit better. Right now, it's a little bit more awkward because you kind of come in and you bend this way. You know, if we kept the curb cut the same and maybe kind of came in more perpendicular and tied it into here. You know, you might have a, it'd be a little bit better in the property, but I don't think it really resolves the concerns of the road agent, which would be, you know, when you're coming out there, if there's a, if cars are stacked in the, I guess in the northbound lane, you know, you're gonna have to wait for somebody to let you in or whatever. So, you know, having said that, I didn't see a lot of the other comments being all that, all that major an obstacle. And so I, I just asked. all that major an obstacle. And so I, I just asked if the board had any, uh, input for us and then we can try to see what we can do to resolve.
Comments?
I agree with the road agent's concern on that.
This is a tough spot, particularly at rush hour. This is the people who want to avoid Lee Circle heading out of Durham. Take that little road off and come up here. I mean, that's quite busy.
Yeah, I think I saw eighteen, something.
And it is a frequent accident site.
Yep.
The other thing is, you're, you're looking to utilize the apartment, um, unpermitted apartment that's there.
Correct.
And then, but I, when I look at the septic plan, it says that there is nothing known about the septic and that would be that, for me, that would be a, a hard stop. You have to have an approved septic design.
You know, if, if that were to be a condition of approval, that's fine. We can do a septic design. It was previous, I guess, prior to twenty-fourteen, this was gonna be a daycare center, I believe it was. So there was an approval for a site here, uh, but it was never, never built because I don't believe they ever went forward with that plan.
Right.
You know, but like I said, it, we were, um, you know, if, if we wanted to make it a condition of CO or whatever, we had a state-approved septic system and either build it or, or, um, have it on file, whatever it is, it is. Um, I'm sure, I'm sure we could, uh, take care of that. You know, it is, um, it's like anything else with old buildings. So the well radius here, well radius seems to encroach onto where the leach field is now. Right? So we'd end up having to move that because we're probably not gonna get that waiver because DES is gonna consider this an expansion. Right? So DES is generally not looking to grant waivers for new construction, which depending on what the board wanted with that driveway, you know, so one of the options we could have is we could look to put a, a leach field in here, move this driveway and locate it here. You know, the problem, and we can meet with the road agent and certainly and, and talk to them, or, you know, we didn't see in the, um, in the regulations where you necessarily needed a line of sight profile, so we, we didn't really cut one for the existing driveway. But, you know, obviously if we move it and then, you know, your regulations call for it, then we can, you know, we can do some line of sight profiles, uh, to make sure what works. Like I said, I think the concern is, you know, and I think I've only been out here twice. And I agree with you, when you do it at night, it's, uh, if you're not familiar with it, that, that corner is a hard corner. You know, if, if we move it down, I think you have to commit to moving it pretty far down to hit that midpoint of the curve in the road. That just fires us up for a variance, right? So, um, the way I was reading the ordinance with the wetland setback, you know, we can't really do anything in that first fifty feet. You know, it's a weird, I haven't talked to your zoning compliance officer, so the fifty-foot setback runs like this. It's gonna come up here and bow around there, but we trim it because, you know, the front setback is here and it's a seventy-five-foot setback, so, you know, we're, I think you, you'd want to come out like somewhere in here, we'd probably be twenty-five, thirty feet off of that wetlands. Now, we could try to mitigate it. We could put stormwater, uh, we could put some, um, treatment swales on the, on the waters, on the wetland side of the driveway, right? Uh, we could look to do things like that. I just don't know if the board, um, what the board is, the board's wishes were.
Seems to be a lot going on here.
Yeah. And there's no driveway cut on the one twenty-five.
There, um, there, well, so we have, we have right here, and that's one of the options we could look to do, right? So we could try to reconfigure this site and put, you know, possibly eliminate this, come into here. We're probably gonna have to go back to DOT because we're actually gonna put more traffic in. I don't assume they're gonna have a huge problem because it'd be pretty minimal. We could look to do that. It's still most likely the wetland setback is here. So, you know, we would probably have to reconfig, to say out of the wetlands up or we're probably gonna have to say here. You know, we, I think we could do it if the board wanted that. I guess if that's what you were looking for, that sort of changes it from like a, a change of use with no new construction to more of a new construction. So having not done a, an awful lot of work in Barrington, I didn't know if you'd be looking for, you know, full-blown engineering drainage, or are we just talking, we can, you know, show some, some grades and a tie-in to the existing pavement, so.
Subdivision regulation by the drive, the drop, the driveway in the sightline.
Our site, our site line references.
Yep.
Twelve point three is your driveway and that's subdivision.
So I, I guess my first question is, is the board want the driveway moved, removed, or to remain?
This is all existing right now.
Right.
And he came in for a change of use for multi, um, for a mixed-use structure to allow for the residential component.
But that might require a new septic design. So.
No, they never built the one on the north.
Can we? Yeah, never mind.
So it's a little bit more involved and maybe like an interview is a lot, and even though they asked for a change of use, like, like it could trigger other things such as parking, road safety, that sort of thing.
I mean, I look, you put in, putting an automotive garage in a
Existing building, but.
It, it's an existing building, but it's a close proximity to a pretty major wetland. So, like.
Well, we've already approved that.
Right, but use, even with that now, Dave, if you look at it, it's been fallen in, torn in, whatever it is, but the condition of your concrete, like oil management, SPCC, like all of that becomes a component of that, like you're still prevention, control, countermeasures.
So I believe it's always been considered a commercial garage. We're separating it totally from the auto sales facility. So, you know, a- and it's, if the board says, um, if the board's opinion was, okay, if you, if you put that as a standalone automotive garage and not accessory or part of the auto sales facility, it trips up A, B, and C, you know, I'll talk to my client and see if, you know, he wants to do that or if he wants to just leave it as, you know, repair it obviously because structurally it fell in. But, you know, see if he keeps it as part of the automotive use to avoid, um, some of the, the site improvements that may come up, you know, come, uh, because of that.
That driveway that comes in, that gravel driveway, the paved driveway in the back, the only, the only reason that's there is to service the only thing that's in the backside, right? So if, if we already have this paved vehicle display area, which is wide open to distances across that.
I think there were two curb cuts there, right there?
Yes.
Yep.
So, wouldn't we be doing it ourselves, I mean, if this existing driveway that we're talking about has this area, if the driveway came in from the other side, well, that's looking at the parking area, in the west side of that parking area, and came down around where that, um, septic system was never done, they come in that side. Now we're eliminating this danger area over here, opening up space if they do have to put in a, uh, septic system, a bigger septic system and not interfere with the, uh, wetlands at all.
Yeah, if they put it with the current driveway, it's, it's outside the protection zone for the well also, if you get it over there.
No, what he, what he's saying is.
No, I know. He's talking about bringing it around. Yeah, I've got that part. Yep. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd love to get up and point that out.
Okay.
But I mean, if, if, if we came around, if, if we have a dick, you want me to, I mean, if we have a dangerous area, why not eliminate the dangerous area?
Right. I think, I think we all agree on that.
If, if you can come off the paved, I think that would definitely be the better option.
So just because I, I don't have much, uh, stick time in Barrington. So if we do this and we go ahead and, and reconfigure that driveway, right? It would sort of make sense that this pavement is in very poor condition.
So we're not really worried about.
Oh, no, that's the least of my concerns. But if we repave, if we're gonna, if we're gonna make this connect, this pavement is in better shape. So in a perfect world, we could tie into this, leave this and then, but if we were to repave the back area because that's new pavement, you know, if we repave what's there, do we need a full-blown site plan review? Does that fire up a need for, uh, something or can we repave like, you know, just patch the pavement, put new pavement down, same place, same grade? Because my, in my opinion, if you were gonna go that far, we should repave the, we should repave Easta there. They could eliminate and, you know, reclaim and regrade, um, get rid of that curb cut on to, uh, Newtown Plains Road. And then you would just, it would be an improvement for the owner if we redid this pavement, tied it in. All the traffic would come in through one twenty-five. Like you said, we eliminate the issue. I'm just curious or concerned, does that fire up the need that we would have to do drainage grading and the whole nine? Or would that be considered a, a construction issue?
Depends how much area you're adding.
What's the square footage of to be adding, I guess, right?
I could find out that out for you, but it would be determined on how much square footage you're adding.
Okay.
Overall, it doesn't look like you would need it, but I can't tell that from
Okay. Nope, that's fine. So.
I'm assuming, is it, is it gravelled going into the garage?
Yes.
It's gravelled, but it was probably pavement at one time. You know? Yeah. A- and it's just, um, it's just really beat. It's old, it's tired. It needs to be replaced.
I mean, I would feel much better about like a residential component than the auto garage, all of that. If it came in directly off one twenty-five and not Newtown Plains, I would have a lot less heartburn over it.
I think that is the consensus of everybody, so.
Okay. So.
The only thing I see though too, though, is if we come like that, we're gonna eliminate three parking spots. There's a certain number of parking spots we're gonna gather residential.
Was it gonna be a single-family house or?
It was a, it's a two-bedroom apartment. They're gonna maintain it. It's true. And I think we could probably, if we're gonna repave, we actually might be able to like reduce some pavement and get a better, it's, it's awkward shape. So if we paved it conventionally, if we did something within the footprint and got the same number of parking spots, i- I think we'd be.
If you look at the paved driveway where there were three spaces noted there in front of the shed.
This one here?
Yeah.
I don't know why that's there. I looked at that.
If you eliminate, yeah, if you elim- yeah, if you eliminate, if you eliminate the driveway where it says paved driveway, to the left of that, it says three spaces, so you could make up the parking, additional parking right there, including some of the land that's now used for a road.
What I'm, what I'm hearing is we're, the board is hopefully like looking for something like.
Yeah, behind the building. Yep.
Yeah, so we could probably reconfigure a couple of spots there to try to save them. I think we can repurpose it and make it work. And then like you said, I think on some level, it's probably cleaner and better. Okay. So we're probably gonna need time on our end.
Sure.
Kinda, uh, talk to Edward and then probably, uh, review the ordinance and talk to your, um, yeah, well, I wanna, I wanna look at that section as how much square footage we have to play with for the new pavement. As long as we can stay under that or, you know, if Edward says otherwise, we can, you know, look to increase that and try to with, um, make sure we comply with the site plan regs and we'd be good that way. So, um.
And probably looking at a new septic requirement too.
Or see what you have for the septic.
Yeah.
I don't believe it's on file. We tried finding one and we couldn't find one on the fourteen plan either. So, yeah, I mean, we, that's fine. We can do it.
Two-bedroom.
Well, you're gonna have the two-bedroom, you're gonna have the bathroom to the automotive shop, you're gonna have bathrooms for the sales, you're gonna have two offices, so.
Yep. Yeah, figure out how many fixtures you're gonna use, so.
Okay.
Well, typically an office should, uh, is it three hundred gallons?
Yeah, that's the minimum.
Yeah.
But I don't know if they'd make us have two. I don't know if we need six hundred total. We might be able to do something along the lines of seven, seven fifty, I think, and make it work. So, um, okay. So I think I have a pretty good understanding of, of where it works. I'm not sure I can get all this done by November seventh.
Just whenever you can, uh, we'll just.
Yeah, I think I need a date certain, but I prefer not to notice again. Get December. I think that would give us the most time.
Were you willing to go that far?
No, we need to set, we wanna see a, a septic design. We wanna see the driveway plan.
What it looks like.
No, we're not, we're just looking for continuance. We're not accepting it. We just request a continuance to the December fifth.
The December fifth meeting?
Is that good for you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm looking for.
I make a motion to continue this to the December fifth meeting.
I'll second it. All of it.
Sorry, it's December seventh.
You guys gotta flip a coin.
All right. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Yep. Joyce.
Any one of us.
Yeah, we were, we were all, uh, checking.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 We're voting so that you have a photo record.
It's official.
Oh, I thought you were voting for it. Well, now, are we, are we moving to adjourn?
Before we do that, do you have any comments you'd like to give to the board at the end?
Anybody have any members to become a planning board ZBA member or something?
Yeah, if you've been able to twist anybody's arm to join the board.
No, like ZBA found somebody. Yep.
Do they?
Yep.
Well, that's not right.
So Tracy said she posted on Facebook.
Okay.
Well, good for Tracy. Let it on.
Now they have.
Yeah, I think Tracy's just scoffing up everybody.
Okay, yeah. Let's meeting adjourned.
Motion to. Seconded by Andy.
Capella, aye.
Tessie, aye.
Just go aye. Thank you, one and all. And it's only nine eighteen.
Pretty good.
I thought we were, it was gonna be an eleven-thirty meeting.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be much later, yeah.
But a couple of continuances certainly help.
That, uh, that moves things right along. The weekly pond one, I think, would have, uh.